Good evening. It's 7 o'clock, and I'd like to get this Urbana City Council meeting started. Would the Clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Barnes?
Here.
Bowers-Socks?
Here.
Shanaweth?
Present.
Lewis?
Here.
Roberts?
I'm here.
Smythe?
Stevenson?
Present.
Mayor Pressing? Here. The first item is approval of minutes of the previous meeting. That is May 5th. Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve the minutes of May 5th.
Second? Motion by Roberts, seconded by Barnes. Any additions or corrections to the minutes? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Are there any additions to the agenda? Okay. Petitions and Communications. Amy Ando. Is it on?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you very much for having me tonight. My name is Amy Ando. I am a resident of the city of Urbana. I live on 712 West Michigan Avenue. I'm here both as a person who lives in Urbana and as a professor at the University of Illinois. I'm an environmental economist and associate professor in the Department of Agricultural and Consumer Economics at the U of I. In my professional life, I spend a lot of time... My kids ask me, "What on earth do you do?" Environmental economics, what is that? And I say, "We study how to make smart choices when the choices are difficult. How do we protect species? When to do so? We need to cut down fewer trees or restrict development." Hard choices. It's not often in my job that I get to study an issue where there's not a hard choice. This is one of them. And so I'm here tonight to talk about lighting redesign because I think it's a rare opportunity for our community, Urbana-Champaign, the University of Illinois, to make some changes in the way that we approach outdoor lighting that will enable us to save energy, reduce carbon emissions, reduce harmful light pollution, and save money. Actually save money. And that doesn't happen very often. So I know that there's this particular thing going on right now, the University District Street Lighting Project, which is the immediate focus of attention. But I think that this is an issue of ongoing potential for the city. And so I'd like this to be an opportunity for us to work out some principles that can maybe guide lighting decisions that are made in the future. In particular, though, with the immediate university district project, I'm concerned that the process that's underway right now is not taking advantage of an opportunity to replace some depreciated capital with lighting that does all of these good things. So there are two key elements of design, although it gets much more complicated than that. And I'm not a lighting engineer. I won't pretend to be a lighting engineer. But we need to think about bulb technology and fixture design, and both of those things, as well as, you know, how many poles and all that. Those are all things that we can think about. One thing I think is important to note is that current lighting in most parts of our community, and on Green Street in particular, generates a lot of light pollution. Light going where you don't really want it to go. Up, out, towards buildings that don't really need to be illuminated. The current outdoor streetlights are not full cutoff. And it took me a long time to figure out what that meant. At first, it sounded scary. I thought, "Well, are we not having light? What does full cutoff mean?" So that's why I added this little picture, because this helped me to understand what full cutoff means. It just means that you don't have light shining up and out. You only have light going where you want it to go. Because our current lighting doesn't adhere to this sort of idea, we have a lot of light pollution. So what? What's the big deal about light pollution? There are a lot of problems associated with light pollution. So we do cost-benefit analyses. I can't give you a dollar value, but there are a lot of damages associated with light pollution. Sky glow means that we can't see the stars at night. Light pollution actually harms vegetation. There's been research done for decades now about how artificial lighting at night causes deciduous trees to stay leafed out for too long, and it shortens the lifespan of the trees. Increasing amounts of research has been done to show the harmful effects that light pollution has on wildlife. Bats, birds, frogs, turtles, you name it. All these things, their night cycles are messed up. And so their breeding and eating and sleeping behavior is thrown off by unnecessary outdoor light at night. It's even... I didn't quite believe this when somebody first told me, but there is real evidence that excessive night lighting can pose a threat to human health. There's documentation that women who live in places that are very brightly lit at night have higher rates of breast cancer. So it would be good if we could reduce light pollution. I think this is not a trivial issue. And the fact that we can do it cheaply is a good thing. So what are some of the benefits we can think about about clever lighting redesign? We can contemplate switching over to, you know, new technology, LED bulbs, for example, which have lower annual energy costs, which is increasingly important as electricity gets expensive. They are more expensive upfront, but Laurel, all of us know how to do that calculation. You know, you've sort of upfront cost, but there are annual savings over time with the energy costs. Depending on the exact parameters, that investment would be paid off within four to 15 years, depending on the exact parameters. You also get lower carbon emissions, which is something this city and the university are committed to doing something about. And there's a feeling that LED bulbs give you higher quality light, a better color, which improves nighttime visibility. What are some benefits to changing over to full cutoff fixture design? Eliminating light pollution, or at least reducing light pollution. You actually save money just from doing that. There are communities that save millions of dollars a year, not from using LED bulbs, but just from not wasting energy shining up at the sky. All right? It also reduces sideways glare, which is a navigation hazard. I have a hard time now driving down Pennsylvania Avenue because I'm dazzled by the lovely globe lights. And it reduces light pollution and all the environmental damages that I just outlined. A colleague of mine, Madhukana, and I did a pilot project with some students, and we did a survey to see if anybody in the community actually cared. And I can't call this a research... real research project yet because our sample size is too small. But the preliminary results are very interesting. We found that the average individual was willing to pay $30 to have lighting redesigned to control light pollution and be more energy efficient. Now, mind you, this is willing to pay $30 for something that's cheaper. Okay? And while most people were mostly concerned about reducing carbon emissions, a quarter of the people listed the light pollution issues as their top priority, as the thing they were most concerned about. And only a tiny fraction of people weren't willing to pay anything to have lighting redesign happen in our community. Are there any disadvantages to rethinking our lighting? I really can't think of any. And I'm all about, you know, there's no free lunch and all that kind of thing. That's what I'm trained to do. But I honestly can't think of any disadvantages. I know people are concerned that lighting redesign might make pedestrians less safe. But lighting redesign isn't about things being dark. It's about having light where you need it and not where you don't need it. And I know there's concern that full cutoff lights might be ugly, so that's why I put these pictures in there. As there are multiple states that have statewide ordinances basically outlawing light pollution. And so there's a huge industry now of companies designing very nice full cutoff light fixtures. It's a little daunting, actually. I'm trying to replace my porch light, and I don't even know how to begin choosing because there are so many lovely full cutoff porch fixtures to choose from. So I don't think it has to be ugly. We can choose perfectly nice-looking lights that accomplish our illumination needs. So the other handout... This is a very non-technical summary that I'm giving. Charlie and Gary Zico have done an excellent job of going through the current RFP associated with the university district lighting project. And they've identified what I think are some very serious problems with the way this process is being carried out right now. And so I know it's occasionally mind-numbing and very technical and easy to say, "Oh." But I urge you not to give up and to find a way to move forward with this and to accomplish the goals that we need. You know, good lighting, less energy wasted, less light pollution, and save money.
Thank you very much. Danielle?
Amy, I've just had two questions. The first is, do you have a sense, or are there statistics out there for the cost savings of full cutoff lighting versus some of the lighting that campus has currently?
Yeah. On the footnote page?
Yeah.
I cited... There's a New Yorker article, and they cited a case in Calgary, Alberta. They didn't... This was not a case where they moved to LED lights. It was a switch to full cutoff reduced wattage. You can use reduced wattage because all the light is going where you need it if you have full cutoff fixtures. And they saved more than $2 million a year just from doing that.
Okay. I'll take a look at that. That's helpful. The second is, how many people did you interview in your pilot study?
Only about 70, thanks to the IRB slowing down the process, and then the students had to finish. If there's interest in the city, we have a whole lot more surveys printed out, and I could try to mobilize an effort to get a broader sample. But right now, it's a pretty small sample.
And was this of students or just campus community? It's professors, students, everyone?
Professors, students, everyone. It was a mixture of students, faculty, staff, and some non-university people. We got them at lunch.
Okay. Thank you.
Dennis Roberts?
Yeah. I was interested in your survey also. I was wondering if anybody in east Urbana had been surveyed?
We did... Possibly. I don't... We didn't ask people specifically where they're from, just which town they lived in. So I don't know which neighborhood they were from.
So you weren't canvassing specific neighborhoods?
No. We located ourselves in a particular spot on campus and just interviewed people as they were coming to lunch.
So it was on... It was at the university campus?
It was at the university campus. We did that because the focus was on the university district project, and so we thought the relevant community was whoever happened to be at the university.
And they said that they were willing to pay $30 more a month for electric?
Oh, no, no, no. Lump sum, $30.
$30. They would make a $30 donation?
Yes, to get this done.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Cliff Singer?
I read through your budget document, proposed budget document, and I also looked at the city of Champaign to do some comparisons, and I have some suggestions for you. First, well, I could not find the township budget on the web. Therein lies a tale, which I would encourage you to think about, the relationship between the township and the city. As you know, Champaign has gone through what I would consider to be absurd somersaults with respect to its township, with the city, who sits, as you do, as the township trustees, not creating and then not solving a major budget problem for the township. We have been through this before here in this city in a much smaller way. And what happened in the past when a recession was looming is that the township used up an entire year's worth of budget reserves in order to get through the recession, and even so, made a small drop in the social services outlays... I was like, the township assistance outlays. And what happens... It happened in the past and is likely to happen again, is there's about a two- to three-year lag. I also do econometrics, so sorry about that. There's about a two- to three-year lag between the recession, peak of the recession, and the peak of the township assistance demand. And therefore, you really need to take a look at past performance and plan ahead in order to keep getting caught short. Rule of thumb is you should have a year's worth of reserves. What you really need to do is detail analysis of the past two recessions and see where you think you're going. And the township is not well set up to do that kind of analysis, so I think you need to work on it together with them. If you don't have enough township reserves, there's a simple solution, which is to shift the so-called social services expenditures from the city to the township. That's truly a way of doing it. In the longer term, however, I really recommend that you start moving now on thinking about moving the township personnel out of their offices, put the assessors in with the library. It's basically an information... public information function that serves the general public, and the rest of the township services with the cloaks and community development offices because they basically have similar functions. I know that this is a politically difficult thing to do with your relationships with the people in the township, but it could save you a very large amount of money in the long run and provide better services to your clientele. Otherwise, that'll save you money. Otherwise, you're gonna have to come up with the money somewhere else, our county services. The city. I know that every year for the last 20 years, because I've read every budget in the last 20 years, your staff projects a future shortfall, even though there's a present, not a present shortfall, in your expenditures minus revenues. And I don't... That doesn't bother me too much. It's a conservative projection. That's the way they do things. You all know how to recalibrate by that for now. However, I am concerned that the city reserves are much smaller than they were as a function of total expenditures than they have been for a long time. And I recommend that you not go down that road. You'll probably be reasonably fiscally conservative, those of you who are here next year, but you never know what's gonna happen in six years. And if you pass on to the succeeding council a marginal reserve picture, and then they aren't as responsible, you can end up compromising your bond rating, and you never, ever, ever want to take any chance on doing that because that's really expensive. So what I recommend is that you fine this $380,000 either through a reduction in expenditures or an increase in revenues. And there are three suggestions here. Street lighting, I already talked to you about, the short-term solutions. Turn them off when you don't need them. A second possibility is your recycling and sewer benefit taxes are not federally taxed deductible, and they cost a fair amount of money to collect. And you could say pump something like 10% to 20% of that revenue for the city if you fold it into your property tax and share the savings between you and the residents, and everybody will be better off. That's another win-win solution, like the one you just heard about. Third, I like your budget, but there's one thing that disturbed me, and this was the claim that the city of Urbana and Champaign have the same property tax rate. This bothered me for two reasons. One is the residents of Champaign don't elect you, and therefore, you should not have a policy which allows them to set your tax rate. That's clearly the case. And second, it's basically not true because the city of Champaign takes 20% of its general property tax revenues as TIF revenues, and you take 46% next year. So I know that some of that doesn't fall on city residents, but almost all of it does. And so your effective tax rate accounting for TIF revenues is actually quite a bit larger than Champaign's anyway. And you should say so in your budget documents to be transparent. If you want to recover this $380,000, then the tax rate would be 1.36 rather than 1.29. We had that tax rate when I was in the city council, and the city survived nicely. Charlie was there, too. This is 1% of the overall tax rate. I completely lost in the noise with respect to the overall tax difference. And in any case, the difference between the Champaign... overall Champaign and Urbana tax rates, about a third of that is accounted for by your TIF take. Those are short-term, immediate things that you can do. And let me recommend two longer-term things that I'll be brief as I can with this... the city could do. First is to take a look... We heard the number 15 years. 15 years is sort of a good planning payback for energy efficiency investments. With the higher cost of energy in your buildings, your vehicle fleet, and your lighting, there are considerable savings that have a payback that's less than 15 years and will put you in a better long-term fiscal position. The university has already made major improvements in its much more difficult situation in very short time by doing building audits and fixing things. But secondly, and item B here, and most importantly, is human capital. Modern development economists recognize three major portions of inputs to production. These are labor, physical capital, and human capital. Human capital is the education and general public health of your workforce, and it's critical to the future, the long-term future of the city. We have two problems that I think are not being addressed as well as they could be. One is that for 20 years or more, actually for about 30 years, ever since the Nixon era, so-called social services planning and community development planning, which are basically aimed at solving the same problems in many cases, have been disconnected. And I think you can trust your mayor and your staff to come back to you every year with an integrated plan for all of those expenditures that really get at your underlying social service problems, which after all, are a large part of the ultimate demand on public safety services and costs to the city. And second, a very important part of human infrastructure is education. As you well know, I'm sure that we have a persistent gap in reading scores developing between particularly minority and low-income students and the average, with them falling one to two years behind in reading capabilities by the time they're in sixth grade. This is a devastating problem for the people involved and for the city as a whole. What I recommend you do is arrange with the school district and the library a comprehensive plan to substantially reduce the number of students reading at grade level. How to pay for this? By offsetting the school district expenditures with increased vocational training transfers from TIF funds, which is perfectly legal. The people who wrote the TIF legislation knew that this was gonna be burdensome to the school districts, and they left a loophole that you could drive a school bus through, which is you can transfer as much vocational training money as you want from the TIF to the school district without affecting your take with the other taxing bodies. So I strongly recommend that you give that serious consideration.
Thank you. Danielle?
Cliff, could you elaborate a little bit further on the proposal to integrate community development plan, use of block grant, and social services fund?
Mm-hmm. Yes. Every year, your community development brings to you an expenditure plan for the community development block grant funds. As I mentioned, many of those parts of that plan have quite a bit of overlap with what social services agencies come and ask you for. And yet, there's no comprehensive integration between those two. So what I suggest is that when the annual budget is prepared, that the city staff, under the direction of the mayor, propose a complete expenditure plan for those funds. Whatever you decide to set them at, if it's over $300,000 a year or $400,000 a year from the city and township, and then a comparable amount of money from the community development block grant, that that comes to you as an integrated proposal with a clear set of goals that are aimed at human development as well as meeting traditional social service needs.
Thank you very much.
Hi. Good evening. My name's Brian Brower. I live at 2305 East Vermont, way out on the far side where I'm not even sure we have our streetlights fully in yet. I'm here to talk to you about our open house we're having at the University of Illinois Fire Service Institute. As most of you have seen out there at one point or another, we host the oldest annual fire school in the country at the U of I. And we'll be having an open house for the public on Friday, May 30th, starting at 7:30 in the evening. The open house will include tours of the state fire academy, demonstrations of how someone is explicated or rescued from an automobile. For folks that have never heard what an automobile airbag sounds like, we'll be setting one of those off so the public can get an idea of what they sound like. Why not put your feet up on the dashboard? We'll have a propane tanker truck that folks can walk through the inside and see how that liquid is transported around our community. We'll also have some demonstrations. Some of you that have not for Fire Factor have seen where we'll have two rooms, one with a smoke detector and a sprinkler system and the other without. We'll light both rooms on fire, and it's very dramatic to see the impact that smoke detectors and sprinklers have, both in alerting the fire department and the occupants and getting the fire controlled. We'll also have a demonstration of how a rope rescue's performed. For example, if you had a window washer or someone else in a precarious position. And since the city has... the city's fire department has the regional rescue response team, we'll also have their equipment there available for the public to come and take a look at and see what resources live here in Champaign-Urbana. From an emergency standpoint, we live in a very resource-rich community, and it's a great opportunity for the public to come out and see those opportunities. We're located at number 11 Gertie Drive. You can see us from Neal and Windsor, but you can't get there from there. You turn off of First Street by the Credit Union, and that's at May 30th at 7:30 p.m. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay. Justin McGrath?
Okay. Well, I do have a proclamation to read. Whereas public works services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as water, sewers, streets, and highways, public buildings, and solid waste collection, whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skills of public works representatives, and whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now, therefore, I, Laurel Lunt Pressing, mayor of the city of Urbana, Illinois, do hereby proclaim the week of May 19th to 23rd, 2008, as National Public Works Day in the city of Urbana, Illinois, and call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issue involved in providing public work services and to recognize the contributions which public works representatives make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life, not only this week, but throughout the year. And I'd like to give this to our public works director, Bill Gray, who runs an outstanding department. I mean, we always win the prize on who gets the streets cleared when it snows. And I'm interested... That must have been a national thing, right? Because it talks about the role of cities in providing water. I couldn't help but notice.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate this proclamation for National Public Works Week. And in appreciation for... in recognition of our 175-year anniversary this year, I had some staff members put together a little bit of history. We did research at the library, newspapers, talked to some of our more mature public works employees that have a little history that go back. And put together this information. You might find it interesting reading. We think it's fairly accurate, but if there's other documentation to correct us, that's fine. But I thought you might want to know that in 1855, actually, is when we officially started a public works department, if you will. A superintendent of streets had started at that time, and the superintendent had duties that included things like securing public health, declaring nuisances, preventing them and removing them, and digging wells, providing city with water, installing hydrants and pumps for citizens, open, alter, abolish, widen, extend, establish, grade, pave, or improve streets, alleys, avenues, and lanes, provide lighting, erect lamp posts, and of course, provide buildings for city businesses, and establish, repair, maintain bridges in the life. So we go back at least to 1855 that we can tell, and maybe before then in a less formal way. So we've been around a while, and anyway, just thought you might be interested to know a little bit of the history of our department, so.
Well, thank you very much for putting this history together. It's really an important part of our birthday celebration to know how every department started. We'll try to get this on the webpage. Any questions for Bill? Yes?
Yeah. Bill, is your department so responsible for digging wells, and are you able to provide the city with water?
No.
In an official capacity?
There's a few responsibilities that change to the years, yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to address the city council? Okay. I don't believe there's any old business. Reports of standing committees. Who ran the committee of the whole?
I did.
Charlie?
Yes. Okay. From last week's committee of the whole, first item is ordinance number 200805038, an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of an agreement with the State of Illinois Department of Agriculture, the Illinois Farmers Market Advertising Grant. For the committee, I so move.
Second? Okay. Motion by Smythe and seconded by Stevenson. Any comments or questions? If not, would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Barnes?
Yes.
Bowers-Socks?
Yes.
Shanaweth?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
fees and changing the fee for caterers' retail additional site. For the committee, I so move.
Second.
Okay, I'd like to point out that I've handed out a revised version than what came out in your packet. The revised version is what we voted on, or what you voted on last week. There was a typo put in the one that went in the packet. On the caterer's license, it said $300, and it should be $350. So this is the correct one that's been handed out tonight. So that was motion by Smythe, and who seconded it?
Me.
And Barnes seconded it. Is there any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Barnes?
Yes.
Bowersox?
Yes.
Chenoweth?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Mayor Pressing?
Yes. That motion carries. Mr. Smythe.
Ordinance number 2008-05-040, an ordinance amending Chapter 3 alcoholic beverages of the City of Urbana Code of Ordinances, public arts funding from Class T3 license fees. For the committee, I so move.
I second that.
Motion by Smythe, seconded by Roberts. Mr. Bowersox?
Yeah, just while we were on this topic, wanted to make sure, as I sort of continue to think through and figure out if we've got it all clarified for things like beer and chili, and blues brews and barbecue, and all of those events that we want to make happen. I just wanted to make sure, Ron, actually, that I was clear and ask you a couple of questions about it. And I know I talked to Susan Tolson, the executive director of the UVA today, who's also in the audience, in case we have questions in particular to the UVA this evening. So the T3, which I know we're just amending the T3 tonight, we already added it two weeks ago. The T3, is that the license that will be used this year for beer and chili, or will it continue to be done through T1 or through the new caterer license?
For beer and chili, I cannot, I honestly don't know. I have not spoken to Mr. Goldberg, who's the one who normally puts that out. I don't have any idea what, if anything, he plans to do with respect to UVA, or if he intends to apply for one of these licenses. I really just don't know because that information has not been made available to me.
Is the route still available, that some private promoters could still go to the UVA, and that they would still qualify for a T1 in order to do an event in the kind of traditional way that it's been done for many years?
Well, one of the reasons that we provided this was so that it would give a mechanism for entities to not have to have a straw entity, if you will, holding the special event permit and the liquor license. So to answer your question, yes, they can still go to the UVA to do that, but it is my intent that if UVA was applying for the liquor license and for the special event permit, that they would be the ones running the event. The concern that I had previously was that you have situations where the special event permit holder and the temporary liquor license holder were not actually the entity really putting on and controlling the event. I don't know if I answered your question, but the answer is yes, that's still available to them, but it would have to look a certain way.
Only, so that route of partnering with the UVA is still available, only if the private promoter?
Only if you?
Only if the private promoter is doing less and the UVA is playing a significant role in running the event?
Well, let me put it to you this way. If UVA is applying for and receiving the temporary liquor license, then they need to be the ones who are selling the alcohol and need to be responsible for that. If UVA is the entity that is applying for the special events permit, then the expectation is they are the entity that's putting it on and therefore are responsible for it.
Okay. I think that makes sense, and I also think a little more discussion, I mean, the background is, we want these events to happen, and we want one way or another to be really clear to the private promoters, to the UVA, what everybody's role is, and we want lots of events to happen in Urbana. And I know, as I was talking to Susan Tolson today, she and I were both a little unclear about what kind of structure we as the city are really promoting and telling people, this is the way to do it, this is the channel, these are the avenues. And whatever structure it is, we want to just know that we're clear about it and know that we're all expressing that to the private promoters and to people who want to have the license. So she and I, and part of our discussion today, thought it might even be helpful to schedule a time for this on a committee, so there was just a little council discussion of it, or a caucus meeting or something. It doesn't need to be formal, but something to wrap our heads around it or make sure we're taking the next step to figure out what the channel is and explain it. So I guess I would ask that some week when we don't have a significant agenda, we do schedule a time on our agenda here or upstairs at caucus to have that conversation, and it would be good to invite the UVA and do that in advance a little. I think talking through it as a group would be really helpful. So that's where I'll leave it, and I'll kind of look for a week when that might work.
Danielle.
Does your proposal, Brandon, preclude us from moving forward with what's before us this evening?
Not at all, actually. Yeah, the T3 is already on the books, and tonight is just the one change to the T3. So it's kind of unrelated, it just seemed like the night that I ended up talking to Susan about it, and that it made sense to ask about it because it's on the agenda. So tonight, I am happy voting for this and moving ahead. I think this perfectly makes sense. My questions are really about the bigger picture, that at least I want to understand because I really care about events in downtown and throughout Urbana.
Just a second comment to piggyback on that, which is, I think that there's two unresolved questions for me, and I think that a committee conversation is the appropriate way of handling it, which is, what is the desire, given that the UVA has played a role in, a pretty significant role, actually, the UVA started as the Sweet Corn Festival organizer, and it turned into a lot of other things. So it's always had at its core an events coordination component. And I just, in fact, I've emailed with Susan, and we haven't had a time to actually have a conversation yet, but my question is, what's the big picture desire of both the UVA board and this council and mayor in terms of the relationship between the Urbana Business Association and the city of Urbana? What are we shooting for? Not only how does this change it, but are there other changes? So for us to kind of revisit that issue, maybe as we're looking at the contract, that should be the conversation, but just to make sure that we're really clear about what the expectations are. And also, as a council member who hasn't been by the UVA recently, what the long-term strategic vision for the UVA is, so that we as a council understand that and can support it. So, and the second thing, which might be a different conversation, is the big picture in terms of the festivals and the role that the city would play in the festivals and making sure that we're not overburdening staff, we're being careful with our liability, and we're able to establish a method to have, to host festivals in the city of Urbana that proliferates those festivals and supports them. So I guess those are the two conversations I'd like us to have in the future on this.
Mr. Bowersox?
Okay, I'll speak my last time. I realized, Ron, that I did have one more question about this, which is, is Blues Brews and Barbecue all squared away? Because I know we had talked, and there was some confusion about whether the state would approve it. Is there a plan for that event and pulling it off this summer?
The short answer is yes. They will not be using this T3 license because the state statutes preclude private entities from having a temporary liquor license unless they already have a liquor license. Okay? So, for example, there are other promoters in the city who may be able to utilize this T3 and probably will, but not these particular folks. So they are going to be partnering with a not-for-profit who will probably be getting the temporary liquor license, but will also be in control of the sales. That entity will be in control of the sales and distribution of the alcohol.
They did come to the birthday celebration meeting on Friday, and they're moving ahead. They seem to be happy. I mean, they're encountering things that nobody anticipated, but this is why we wanted to start small, so we'd figure it out, and then we can move ahead.
Good question.
Yes.
Just based on what you said about state law, does that mean, since we already have a class of liquor license for those people who have a business in town, who are also extending that to the streets, is the T3 irrelevant at this point then? Because it really was for profit entities that don't have a base of operations here in town with a liquor license already to host events, and yet, the state doesn't allow that to happen. So who would make use of the T3?
Actually, it was not created for that reason at all. That was going to be a collateral benefit if the state allowed it, but this ordinance was created because of the situation I explained before, where you had not-for-profits acting as straw people for local businesses who wanted to do things on our city streets but could not. We had no mechanism in our city ordinance liquor license, our liquor licensing ordinance, to allow them to conduct events that were not on property contiguous with their business property. So, for example, you could do something in the parking lot if you were already a bar owner, or you already had a liquor license, but there was nothing that allowed you to come out here on Main and Broadway and have an event. So that's what this was created for. That was always at least my intent. And then, after that discussion was already being had, Blues and Brews and Barbecue came along, and the thought was that possibly they could benefit from it too, but state statute precludes them from doing it.
Okay. Anyone else? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Barnes?
Yes.
Bowersox?
Yes.
Chenoweth?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Smythe?
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries. Next, a motion to establish a fiscal 2008, 2009 Urbana Public Arts Plan.
For the committee, I so move.
Second.
Any discussion? Danielle.
Just last week, the committee had suggested some word changes, and I believe the motion to send it to council included asking it to bring back some word changes. So you have this two-page, no margins, I'm trying to fit things on two pages, this two-page document that is exactly the same as the document I gave you with formatting changes, except for what is in yellow. So what's in yellow is specifically the changes, and what it basically says is that it makes it explicit what was kind of implied, but the explicit is that the commission is invited to take this program proposal as a starting point, and it may elect, that's supposed to say may, not make, may elect, this is what happens when I try to do things too quickly, to make any revisions it deems appropriate and send revisions back to council. So it can run with it, or it can make revisions, and it should just be clear to it. And actually, the motion last week included a section on partnerships, but I actually put it in the document, page 2, number 6, to engage in partnerships with area organizations. And it gives the Society of Arts and Letters as an example, but is open to other partnerships.
Okay, anyone else? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. I don't think there are any special committees. Reports of officers. Kelly Hartford? She'll give you till Wednesday.
She said till Wednesday.
Okay.
I just wanted to, I sent a reminder out by email. I also wanted to, in case you didn't get it for some reason, the reminder in person as well, for your allocations, that today was the due date, but I absolutely need it by Wednesday, by the end of the day, if possible, so that I can then compile all the information and then give it to Danielle. So, and I want to see if there was any questions, if everybody had their electronic copies or if you needed something else, or?
Well, I want to thank you for providing me with the copy, but I could just add everything up so I could make sure the total was the same. So if anybody else needs that, she's already developed it.
That'd be great.
That makes your life a lot easier.
Yes.
Yeah, just have it be a spreadsheet so that when you put your numbers in, you'll have a total, and then you can adjust things to make sure you come in with the same number.
Sure, I will send it out tomorrow. Sure, I'll send it out again, so.
That's why I'm working too. I'm worried I said we've done about midnight tomorrow night.
That's true.
So I've got our desk in the morning.
Well, Wednesday, by the end of the day would be fine. That'd give me several days to compile everything, so.
Okay.
Tomorrow at midnight.
Anything else for Kelly? Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else on reports of officers? Okay, let's move on to new business, resolution number 2008-05-021R, a resolution approving the Boneyard Creek Master Plan. We got a new copy handed out tonight. Dale Jamison from Public Works.
What you have before you this evening is a resolution asking the, approving the Boneyard Master Plan. It was pointed out in a memo, we started late 2006 on this process and looking at the Boneyard through, from Main Street to University Avenue, and to develop a master plan for improvements along there that would create some amenities and improve and create gathering places for individuals along that stretch of the Boneyard. The master plan that has been on the website, and we furnished to you and presented to you April 14th, is basically the plan that's approved by this ordinance. There are a couple of minor editorial changes that we, or additions we made to it. In Segment 1, there will be references to the provision for acknowledgement of the original settlers' home in that segment. The details of that acknowledgement will be incorporated in the design development phase that we will be asking for consideration tonight also. The other change that will be in the plan, which has been discussed, is that the north limits of Segment 1 are defined as the Denny's redevelopment, and because some of us may not be around or know what the Denny's redevelopment was, we're going to geographically define that northern limits of that segment. We're looking at either the address of the Denny's site or using Water Street, or pretty much extension of Water Street. So those were the two changes. We presented this to council on the 14th. We had an open house on the 14th and presented it to all the stakeholders and invitees, and that was advertised in the paper. And then we presented the plan commission on May 8th, and there were no substantive changes or comments that came out of those presentations. So what we're asking for tonight is that the
The master plan that has been on the website and we furnished to you and presented to you April 14th is basically the plan that's approved by this ordinance. There are a couple of minor editorial changes that we, or additions we made to it. In Segment 1, there will be references to the provision for acknowledgement of the original settler's home in that segment. The details of that acknowledgement will be incorporated in the design development phase that we will be asking for consideration tonight also. The other change that will be in the plan, which has been discussed, is that the north limits of Segment 1 are defined as the Denny's redevelopment, and because some of us may not be around or know what the Denny's redevelopment was, we're going to geographically define that northern limits of that segment. We're looking at either the address of the Denny's site or using Water Street, they're pretty much extension of Water Street. So those were the two changes. We presented this to council on the 14th. We had an open house on the 14th and presented to all the stakeholders and invitees, and that was advertised in the paper. And then we presented the plan commission on May 8th, and there were no substantive changes or comments that came out of those presentations. So what we're asking for tonight is that the attached resolution approving the Boneyard Master Plan, Main Street to University Avenue, be approved, and further, we're seeking by motion direction to proceed in entering into a design development contract with Wankin Associates, the consultant that have prepared the master plan.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Smythe, seconded by Lewis. Any discussion? Mr. Bowersox?
Yeah, thanks, Gail. This is a great plan. I'm really excited to move to the next step. Tell me quickly what the length of the design phase might be, and when in the timeline of this do we need to decide what section to pull the trigger on first?
The consultant is developing the scope of what the design development stage is, and we haven't gotten that in hand yet, so I'm not quite sure what that length of that time would take. I would think that would occur over the remainder of the summer and then through the winter, and probably have something in the spring. We are going to involve the stakeholders, all the stakeholders and the council and interested parties as a part of this design development phase, just to make sure that the details we're developing as we're developing are agreeable. And so it will be developed, and along that process with the stakeholders and interested parties, I believe that priority project will come out of the details, and the costs will be refined so that we'll have a more, you know, these are budget numbers that are in a current plan, and the numbers will be more accurately defined with the design development.
Danielle?
Just a comment on what Brandon said, then a question. The comment is, one way we could think about this is, in terms of what we go forward with first, is make it a competition amongst developers and saying, depending on who comes to the table first, there's limited dollars, we're not going to be able to do all this, you know, it's going to be a long-term horizon, and the folks who are ready to come to the table with partner dollars and development proposals would be the first place we would start. And so I really think that that makes the most sense financially, and there's a lot of benefits for people who are near to the Boneyard redevelopment, to their businesses and their properties. And so I think we should really kind of set the stage, so to speak, to see, you know, who's ready to make some commitments, some financial commitments. I've looked at the documents in detail and attended the open house and was really thrilled with what came out of it. I thought that the consultant did a fantastic job. In particular, I just want to say, my ward has been intimately involved, at least a section, the Downtown Neighborhood Association, because they had some significant concerns with some of the reconfigurations. And the fact that their concerns have slowly been addressed and incorporated such that there don't seem to be outstanding concerns from the neighborhood, I think is a testament to the process. Because tonight, there would be a large fleet of angry people here tonight if that process hadn't happened, because I certainly went through a couple of meetings with the neighborhood that started out as, you know, lots of concerns, very vociferous. At this point, I think that concern, the neighborhood, and I met with them not so long ago, is this semester, they want to see the public works dollars come to their neighborhood, and they feel incorporated into the process, and they feel like they've had a voice. So I think that's great. And I think public work staff should be committed as well for making sure that those bridges were built between the neighborhood and this process. The one concern I have with the plan as it stands, and I guess my question to you is, is this a concern that we, that you think, if it's shared by council, we should wait before we go forward, or is it a concern that we could incorporate as we go forward? Is the, I don't know what the section is called, but the section where Springfield and Main Street splits, the park that is designated behind what is currently the Denny's facility. The concern that I raised at the meeting is that the public's access to that space is really limited. We don't have, the pictures are actually, I guess those aren't the pictures, pictures aren't here, and it's hard to have a conversation without the pictures, but if folks who have looked at can recall that basically Main Street and Springfield still split, and you kind of have to go down a pathway to get to the public park piece that would be next to the Boneyard. So it's not like a plaza that kind of opens up onto the street and that you can see from the street, and as a result, I have real concerns about creating another Leo Park situation, a beautiful little park, very hidden, not enough access, and that actually has better access than this would have. I mean, you'd have to know that to go down this little pathway, you get to that parklet. And I have real concerns about that as a design from a public park perspective. Also, you know, public safety issues, et cetera. And so I'd like us to really look at, you know, traffic reconfiguration. I think that that, that the split between Main and Springfield is a significant health and safety issue for our community and very dangerous blind corner. And I think that with possible redevelopment in that area and a reconfiguration of that plan, we could address the safety issue, we could have more visibility, and we could have a much more kind of public plaza at that place rather than what more looks like a pocket park that's kind of hidden. So I guess that's my concern, and what I don't want is that we say, go forward, and then we have consultants spend time and money basically pricing out a picture, which isn't exactly what I think, well, certainly not what I want, and I'd be interested to hear what other council members want. Should we go back, should we look at that piece a little bit more a week from now or two weeks from now and have a conversation about it, or?
I believe that the plan is presented as a concept, and it's for development around the Boneyard, and some of the areas that along Main Street and the Y are somewhat dependent upon what kind of development we can generate in there. The design development phase is going to extend out for a year or so, and I think that maybe some of that information will pan out and maybe direct that design development, and we can work with a consultant so that they don't focus in that area first necessarily, if we think that there's going to be some development in that area that might change how that looks. They were, their task was to work within existing confines and existing properties, and that's what they did. If that's going to change, then we can refocus them as they get into the design development phase. But the plan as it is, is for the Boneyard and the existing properties, and I think we can go ahead and approve that and then deal with the questions you have as things progress over the next year or so.
Charlie?
Gail, real quickly, is it still sort of pictured in five sections like they presented?
Five segments, yes. The segments haven't changed at all.
Okay, so Segment 1 is the beginning, and Segment 5 is down by University, right?
That is correct. That is correct. I didn't explain what the changes in the resolution were. CD had asked for some changes to tie the resolution into the previous plan and to point out that this was just basically an amendment to the existing plan and not replacing the existing plan. So Robert can speak to that a little bit further if you'd like.
Robert Myers?
Yeah, just wanted to comment, we do have a Boneyard Creek Master Plan. It was adopted in 1978 by the Boneyard Creek Commission, and this wouldn't do away with that plan because the existing 1978 plan is for the entire stretch through the city, and this is for one particular segment. So we don't want to do away with the old plan. This is more of a supplemental to that plan. It's a vision for this particular reach of the Boneyard Creek.
Dennis Roberts?
As I remember, I guess I'm drawing from my memory now, one of the things that the consultants suggested was that the city work to, with the property owners along the creek as far as like the easement and access rights and, you know, to adopt the plan in a manner that's going to work with the property owners that are currently there. So we had to have some kind of an easement plan with them. What are the steps that would, is it too soon to begin work on creating an easement dialogue with the property owners, or should we be waiting for the plan to be adopted formally as far as the design?
I think that as we get into the design development phase and get a little more detail about the design, we can define some of the limits of what the easements would be. I don't know that it's a problem, starting some dialogue with them to get some of the parameters, but we won't know the exact limits, whether it exceeds what we currently have with the drainage easement or would be less until they get a little further in development design. So it's not too early, but it's a little early to get into real detailed specifics about that process.
Any other questions? All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Did that cover the motion for direction to proceed also?
Yeah, it was a motion, my motion was for both items.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
I move that we go into closed session to discuss pending litigation pursuant to Illinois, pursuant to Chapter 5 of the Illinois Consolidated Statutes.
Second.
It's Chapter 5, right, Ron?
Okay.
Yes, the actual, the section is 5.
5.
ILCS.
120 over to subsection C11.
Correct.
Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying, oh, roll call, pardon me. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Barnes?
Yes.
Bowersox?
Yes.
Chenoweth?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Smythe?
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Mayor Pressing?
Yes.